...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the temple with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, this is Kimberly's first time calling rolls, so please speak up. She doesn't know your voices the way I do, okay?
We're ready to call the rolls.
Mr. Townsend?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Ms. Woodard? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Hollinsworth? Ms. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Gregg?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Boyd?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the September 3 meeting?
Oh, she did approve.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're good to go with the minutes. Under new business, we do have one add-on request for the agenda, that's Autumn Wood subdivision Phase III. Is there a motion to add this to the agenda tonight?
Summon.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to add this down to item number six at the bottom there. Item number one is Sleepy Hollow Section 5. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're ready for item one. Gina?
Getting too much stuff. Kimberly's, yeah, she's clicking for me, so, yeah. Anyway, this is Sleepy Hollow Section 5, and this had been previously come before us a little bit, and, but then they waited too long, things changed with the wetlands and the water regulations and everything, so they had to come back and to resubmit. So this, what you see are these lots is the only ones that they can do, is right here. All of this is wet, now, they cannot get into it at all. So those are the ones, and the Reizes are buying the property, I believe, from the Batsons. And so we just really need to do a preliminary approval of this. We don't have the bond yet, we have the bond numbers, so when we get the bond, more than likely, they are going to do a lot of the infrastructure and everything like that before they try to do a final plat and sell any lots and get it recorded. So we just need a preliminary approval for this, and then we'll go on to the bond next.
Okay, are there other questions or discussion on this item?
Oh, yeah, one thing.
Can I let you remind me? You know how we have to put this detail on here about when there's not enough room for, to meet our regulations about the driveway?
That is being put in here, so you guys can see that, you can approve it the way, that's the way it will be once it's built, and if that's good with all of you, then that's the way it needs to be with the, with the motion and everything.
Okay, that's like, we have a little detail on our drawing, on our packet here.
Yeah, you have it on there.
Is it made for an entrance into the side of the house?
Usually, these, a lot of these are in the front, sometimes, depending on if it's a corner lot, it could be on the side. I don't know how they'll end up doing it, we hadn't seen any building plans, I mean, you know, the houses, how the houses are going to be built on it or anything.
Okay, are there any other questions? I'm not hearing any. Is there a motion for approval there?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve it, depending on this, the outline this states.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
She called you first, David.
She called me?
Yeah, and Mr. Townsend thought it was him, so, that's okay.
I'm two people.
I'll say yes.
I'm two people.
You're two people tonight, Mr. Townsend?
Yeah.
Seven to zero passes.
All right, item number two is the bond for Sleepy Hollow Section 5. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're ready for item number two.
In your packets, you have copies of the bonds that Public Works has sent, Water, Wastewater has sent, and Street, Electric has sent for the streetlights. And down at the bottom, the one for the electric department, the streetlights, the shortest one, is the total number for the bond, which is $613,919.39, and that is with a 20% add-on. And that's what we do normally, just in the event that it doesn't get done, and the city has to do it, and, you know, like, the cost goes up over, over a couple of years or whatever of it not being done. More than likely, what will happen with this is that they will do a lot of the infrastructure themselves before they try to bond, because with the water, wastewater being such a large amount, that's, more than likely, that's what they'll end up doing. So we need to just approve the bond, and that will go on to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for them to approve, and when they, when they get it to us, accept that as well. So when they get that bond, they can, whatever they choose to do, if they want to, want to start the construction or not, or they can bond for the whole amount.
And that total was? 613.
919 and 39 cents. And it's at the bottom of this sheet, right here, total amount down here. Do you not have that one?
I'm not finding it.
The electric?
We do.
It is right at the bottom down there.
Okay.
All right, is there a discussion about this bond, the bond amount?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Seven to zero, it passes.
All right, item number three is Robert Fletcher rezoning request, AG 2 to RP 80. Is there a motion to put this item on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
I'll take one as a motion and the other one as a second.
That's good.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're ready for item number three, Gina.
Okay, item number three is Mr. Robert Fletcher is requesting a rezoning from AG 2 to RP 4, to RP 80. This is a county zoning, but it is in the planning region, that's why it's before us. He plans on to cut out a lot for his daughter to build on, and that's, basically, that's just in a nutshell why it's before you, it's in the planning region, and he wants to build, his daughter to be able to build a house on his property there, or part of the property. You'll have a subdivision plaque coming to you after this gets done as well, not, not tonight, next, next meeting.
What is the RP 80 comparable to in our?
Well, I'm assuming 80 means 80,000 square feet, the way ours is R 40, RS 40 is, R 40 is 40,000 square feet, so, I did not look that up in the book, in their book, and I didn't call them, and I didn't ask Steve Art, so, I'm assuming that's what it is.
So that is a county number?
Yes, it's a counting, it's a counting number, yes ma'am. And I misspoke, the plat will not come to before you all, because it's only a wooden lot subdivision out of his property, but I'm telling you all that there will be a subdivision of this property if, if it's rezoned by the county. So basically, what you all are doing, you're recommending to the county about this zoning to be changed. It's out on Clarity Road, I don't know if y'all know where that is.
Mm-hmm. I do. So it's up to the county?
Right.
I'm sorry?
So I make a motion that we approve this to be submitted?
You just, your, your motion needs to be just that you approve it and you recommend it to the county for the zoning change, yes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Seven to zero passes.
All right, item number four is a right-of-way abandonment request on Hill and Matthews Street. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I think I heard a second somewhere, Ms. Boyd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, what have we got on this, Gina?
Well, this right, this piece of property is right beside the fire station, right, where they used to sell the Christmas decorations and everything, do y'all remember that? This, and there is a right-of-way down, down between two pieces of property, there are no utilities in it, it's just, for some reason, there's an old right-of-way easement there. And Mr. Sloan is requesting that this right-of-way be abandoned, of course, there's no other property owners on each side, so he will be the only, only owner that will, you know, benefit from the width of the property. So that is what he is asking, and have no idea what his plans are for the, for the property, but evidently, he has something, something planned, something he wouldn't have.
So I don't see any reason not to do it?
No, ma'am, I mean-
Since they're not the property owners, is that what your, the city's thinking?
I'm sorry?
Is that, is that what the staff is recommending?
Yes, ma'am, I mean, that, yes, everybody has signed off on it, they've approved it, I mean, there's no, like I said, there's no utilities to be moved, there's nothing in there that would keep the right-of-way from being abandoned at all.
Is that something that he would have to purchase, that some-
That is up to the board. The board will decide that, we have an ordinance prepared that will go to the board their next meeting, and it will be up to them, be up to Mr. Gregg and the rest of his, his aldermen.
You said there was two parcels laying there?
Yes, ma'am.
See, this is the alley right here in yellow, and this on each side, well, actually, there's three, there's this, this, and this. That is all owned by Mr. Sloan, and for some reason, there's still an old alley down through there, but like I said, you can't, there's no utilities or anything in that, and he's, for some reason, requesting it to be abandoned.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Yes.
He said yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Seven to zero, it passes.
All right, item number five is the final plat of Legacy Section 7. Do we have a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're ready for item number five, Gina.
This is a three-lot subdivision, I think it is probably almost the last, I'm not sure, but it's almost the last part of the Legacy pud, that it will be platted, more than likely. There may be a few lots somewhere in the other sections that hasn't been built on, but they may be platted, but anyway, this is the last section that I, I didn't even realize this was here until I got to looking into the master plan. But anyway, this is on Oakland Road, it's right before you get to the terraces at Legacy, the town, the 11 acres that you all have looked at before, it's right before that, and the plans have been approved by, and signed by Terry Beers with Water, Wastewater, those construction plans, and they've been sent to the state. Terry, is there any timeframe, I mean, timeframe about the, coming back from the state?
Yeah, I was just looking for you, and wastewater, you know, that's what it is.
Is this the lots where they've been doing all the construction and things going on on it? Okay.
He, yeah, yeah. One shaking his head, one saying, yes, ma'am, so, okay.
But we're serious, construction's been using it.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't been over there in a while, so I had no idea they were using that, so, anyway, but it, we're, just because the state has not approved them yet, we're asking for conditional approval, and Mr. Doris is here, he says he plans to do the construction, he does not plan to bond before, you know, we get it recorded, so that has to be all in to the satisfaction of Mr. Beers and everything, before all that's taken care of, and anything else that needs to be done, to be able to record it and then start selling lots, the three lots, so. But we're asking for conditional approval, just because TDEC, the plans are not back from, from the state yet to, for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, Allen, give, give us a second.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole? Mr. Poole?
Oh, me? Yes.
Who, who, who? Who did you give? And Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Seven to zero passes.
All right, and item number six is our add-on request for Autumn Wood subdivision Phase III.
The Autumn Wood add-on request, we're asking for preliminary approval of Phase III. Well, you need to get it on the floor, don't you?
We can, I don't know if we'd be, put it on the agenda if we covered that, but we need, I guess we would need a motion to discuss it.
So moved.
Is there a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Okay, Autumn Wood has come back in, Mr. Darrell Adler has purchased it from Jerry Clark, it has come back in before us, and he has, the construction plans they've given us are for both sections, three and four, but we're only approving three right now. And the reason, they're just trying to get the preliminary approval so he can get in there while we still got good weather, and he wants to start doing some of the infrastructure that has to be put in. So all, is he, Terry, plans been sent to TDEC, or they've been, you've approved them?
They're being-
Okay, okay, so that's what's happening, I, I know Terry just got them.
And Section 3, those plans are already there, it's the 6 and 4.
Yeah, but-
You're looking at 3, that infrastructure's already, that's okay.
Okay, so that's in, okay. But the way I understand it from Mr. Bagwell, kind of, three and four construction plans tie together?
Yeah.
Okay, so anyway, we're asking for preliminary approval for Phase III, is what we're doing, and strictly, the reason being is so that we can, he can start his, his construction to get the infrastructure in. And he, I don't know that he'll bond any, I don't know if he's going to bond any, he may do it all, but he may come back, we may come back later with a bond for that, when he gets ready to get it recorded, and, you know, start selling the lots. But that was him, he and Mr. Adler and David Brewer had a, had a conversation before David left, and that was what David told me, that that, the main reason for the preliminary approval, he was asking for that, to be able to do that.
So it's a total of 16 lots?
Mm-hmm, for Phase III.
For Phase III.
Y'all are only looking at Phase III right now, Phase IV plat has not come in, the construction plans have, but the plat has not.
And the staff is good with, with that request?
Yes, sir, we are. Motion to approve.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Seven to zero passes.
All right, under old business and other business, did you want to talk about the DZA?
Now, let's go, let's do Robmont first, please.
Do what you-
The Robmont discussion, the Robmont bond.
Oh, okay.
It's just a discussion, there's no action to be taken on it at this time.
Do we need a motion to, okay?
No.
Let's go with it then.
Okay. This Robmont, out there beside Tracy Langston, we've, we've come to before y'all, before asking, talking to you about the Robmont bond, asking it to be reviewed, renewed. Our regulations state that, basically, you can only have two renewals. This was started, this was approved, the final plat was approved in 2011, and we've had that many renewals since then. Staff has no, staff has to say, tell you that we're going to ask you to call the bond. We're telling you this preliminary, in, in advance of it, of it, of it, of it coming before you, I've already talked to Mr., hold on, what's his name? Mr. Bill Wyatt, telling him that, you know, it's going to be coming due, I think it's the end of November, I believe, I forget exactly when it is, but anyway, it's coming soon. So we wanted to talk to you all and tell you that staff's recommendation is going to be to call the bond, and that's basically because our regulations tell us we have to. This Planning Commission has been gracious enough to extend it all these years since 2011. So that's just something that we wanted to bring, bring up to you all, and tell you that, you know, look, that's what we're going to do, you all have to think about it and decide what you're going to do, we're going to have, I guess, Mr. Wyatt and whomever else is a representative for this property, probably come to the next meeting, when we do call the bond, or ask you to call the bond, and that's, I mean, we just wanted to bring it to your attention, that that's what we have to do.
I have a question, I'm trying to understand, so 2011 was when this started?
That's when it was approved.
And we have already renewed twice?
The twi, the two times that we're allowed to do, yes.
We've already done that?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's up for renewal again?
No, we've done it more than twice.
Oh, okay.
2013 would be when it was, the two times was up.
Oh.
And then we've done it over since then, because, well, for some reason, that property has not just, has not taken off like some of the other properties, it has not developed the, I guess, the way that the property owner and the developer thought it would, I really can't tell you what the reason is. But I'm just bringing this to your attention, telling you that we're going to ask you to call the bond, and just so that it's in your mind, you can, if you need to ask questions over the next month or so, then, you know, you can ask questions of us and everything like that, and like I said, all parties will be notified, like I said, I've already made one, one phone call to Mr. Wyatt, telling him that, you know, it's not going to be long before the bond is coming up to be discussed and everything, so.
They, they haven't sold any of those lots, have they?
Not, not, I'm not David.
That Robmont, that Robmont subdivision, when I talked to Chief Greer, I mean, not Greer, but at the fire department, we're, we're in need of, for maintaining our, our Level 3 for fire insurance reasons, we are right now in need of telling the insurance companies who, who rate us that we found a place to put a fire department. This area is where everyone agrees it needs to go, somewhere in this area. A couple of months ago, I put it on the Board of Mayor and Alderman's agenda to buy this piece of property before it got completely developed, because you've got access from South Main, and then you got access on the other side, it reaches both sides, but it drops off the hill a little bit before it dropped into the back. And we could redevelop and sell off the north side, have what we need for the fire station on the south side, and it's close enough to town, but the politics are pulling it to try to put another non-taxpaying project at the city's expense out on Batson Boulevard, and that's where the politics, I think, got this shot down, and when it was on the agenda to approve, to do this. And I would hope that the, the board could continue renewing until maybe Coolerheads or whatever look at this property again, and not let the politics put another government-paid, non-taxpaying project out on Batson Boulevard, and put a fire station closer to the town where the people are, instead of out there in the middle of nowhere. So if you develop it, that's going to make it harder to do, and kind of put a dead nail in ever getting that fire station right there, where the chief said it would be a good place to do, but like I said, their politics are playing here.
One thing I do want to correct Mr. Sneed on, there is no access to South Main as of right now. When we developed that out through there on Tom Austin, we told all, like Tracy Langston, Mr. Grimes, we, we kept a buffer down through there to keep the commercial away from the residential that was still there. So as of now, right now, there is no access onto South Main.
What would be involved in getting an access?
I guess the board or the Planning Commission, I mean, I'd have to look into it to see exactly how we did it, but that, that is what was done when that was developed down through there as commercial. So as of right now, there is no access on the South Main.
Does that property go all the way over to South Main? It does.
It does, yes.
It's not an access.
No, it's just like Tracy Langston, his property goes all the way, Dr. Grimes goes all the way to South Main. There is no access to any of those properties onto South Main, and we did that for a reason, to buffer the residential from the commercial. So, but anyway, the, this bond, just wanted to let you guys be aware that that's what's coming down the pike, and, and telling you why staff will have the recommendation that staff will have. We, we are, we have no choice. I mean, we had no choice last year, so, but we have no choice, we have to abide by the regulations that we uphold.
Is this a price thing, the reason that they're not selling?
I can't, I don't know what the price is on any of the lots, I haven't asked anyone. But like I said, I did talk to Mr. Wyatt back about two or three weeks ago, something like that, I made a phone call, telling him that, hey, look, it's going to be coming up for discussion, and then either renewal or calling it, so I just wanted him to be aware.
What would have to be done to get it, what would the bond do, what would it do to complete it? What's likely to be done out there?
You know, I'm not sure what the current bond is amount, let's see. Eighteen, okay, I guess this is it, because this was November the 5th, 2018, so the bond is $105,336.
And what would that?
It finishes out the paving, I think the curving is still there, is that, do you remember, Terry?
Water and sewer is in it.
Yeah, water and sewer, water and sewer is there.
So basically, it's just the final coat of maybe-
I think so, I think so, it may be some curving, I'm not sure, Allen would be able to tell us for sure, and he, he didn't, I forgot to call him and ask him today. So, but yeah, it's, I think it's, I mean, with that amount, it's not, seemed to be that, that much, I don't know, there may be some lights in there as well, but it's, doesn't really tell me here exactly what it's for on this one. Oh, wait a minute, it does, I'm sorry. Streets drainage and certification is $63,376, the electric department, $26,000, and inflation and administrative costs is $15,960, for a total of that 100, I'll tell you, 105,336. So those are what, those are the things that are left to be done.
Okay, we're aware.
We're aware.
So, I wanted to just let you all know what is coming onto the BZA and I think Kimberly has popped them up there. Ms. Lisa Jones lives on Born Street and she has the house on the corner. Do you know who I'm talking about, David? Mr., oh, who used to live there? She lives at 701 Fifth Avenue with, Mr. Alfred used to live there.
Oh, yeah.
She bought Mr. Alfred's house. And behind her is another small cabin looking house. She may have demolished it already. I don't know. Anyway, she wants to build a house for her parents to live in. And what she's wanting to do is make it look something like is in the neighborhood. So, she's going to have, because of it being a small lot and the zoning of RS10, she's having to ask for a 10-foot variance on the north side. Instead of 15 feet, it would be 10 feet. Because when you go up a second story, you have to add five feet to the sides. And, and reduce the south sides, she says reduce the south side setback to five feet. So, that would be reduced to five feet. She also wants the house to be able to be that, sort of the average of the houses that are on the street, not pushed way back the way that one is to bring it forward. So, that is what she is asking. That will be before the BZA board next week. Mr. Joe Ragland is asking for a variance to build a house on, at 1700 John L. Patterson. And he wants to change the setback on the west, on 17th Avenue West to 15 feet instead of 25. So, it would be a 10-foot variance is what he's asking for. And I haven't got into all of this just to see, but, you know, over there, I think he bought, this is one of the lots that was bought from the city and county, I believe. So, you know, those lots over there are either probably non-conforming or they're smaller than 7,000 square feet. I mean, they are non-conforming if they're 7,000, so below the 7,000 square feet. So, that is the other thing, the other, one other item. I have five altogether. Mr. Meisel, you know, we've been talking about Mr. Meisel for a while now over on Gorham Avenue. Well, Mr. Meisel needs to get his building built and he's running to a wall because of the industrial board and the city are kind of at odds. The city has a, like a indefinite lease on that piece of property that the right-of-way needs to be abandoned to be able for him to build his building. But the industrial board says, well, we still own it. So, we're kind of at a stalemate. So, in order for him to get his building built, he is asking, he's going to be asking for a variance. And this man has, he's jumped through all of our hoops. Site plan, can't remember how many things we did for him, but anyway, the site plan for sure. Oh, the subdivision, I think we put three lots together. There were three lots behind O'Reilly's that were Ms. Guthrie's and they were separate lots, so we can, they were combined into one. If they haven't been combined, they will be once the right-of-way goes away. And so, of course, we have the right-of-way abandonment. So, we've got several things going on, but he needs to get this building built in Electrolux. He does work for Electrolux. So, Electrolux has told him, you've got to get your building built and you've got to get your stuff out of our space because we've got to have this. So, he's kind of between a rock and a hard place. So, he is asking for a variance as well. And I think it's a 25-foot variance, I believe, from, off of industrial. And his address will be industrial. That's what E-911, instead of Gorham Avenue, you know, that he'll build over top of where Gorham is and everything. So, his address will become industrial, South Industrial, when he gets everything built. I have two from Jacob Van and JRF Builders. One is, let's see, what is this one? Mabel Street, I'm sorry. Didn't have an address. We just have a map and parcel on that. He is, I think one of them is a corner lot. This one is, yeah, this was a corner lot on Mabel and Grace Street. He would like to have, with the corner lot, you have two fronts, one side and one rear. And you get to choose which is your front, which is your rear, and which is your side. He's asking for one of those fronts to become a side. He wants it reduced to 20, he wants it reduced to 10 feet. So, it would be a 20-foot set, variance is what it would be. And I've got, I've got the, the way the lot looks, if anybody wants to see it and everything. But that's over on, on Mabel Street. And then the other, the other one that he has is on 10th Avenue East. And the housing authority is right back in this area. This is a lot that is in blue there. And he is wanting to build a house there and he's asking for a, he's asking for a 20-foot variance for the, the rear setback to be 10 feet instead of 30 is what he's asking. So, he backs up to the, the rear setback is here against the housing authority back there, where there's really no houses. It's mostly open land. So, I hope this is all I have for the BZA for the rest of the year. So, anyway, anybody have any concerns about any of these items going to the BZA? You're welcome to show up this next Tuesday night.
The Lisa Jones thing, the first one?
Mm-hmm.
Is that on the, the corner lot there or the lot next to?
The lot next to her. Yeah. No, she's, the pink and blue building, my granddaughter calls it the castle house is what she calls it. And she's behind, where she's wanting the variance to build a house for her parents is behind there, is a lot behind there.
Okay. Yeah, the, the house on the corner is in the historic district, but that's not?
That's not. I don't believe, no.
In the historic district thing, it allows to move back and forth to line up with the streetscape.
Right. But she would like, and she may end up asking you to go.
Right.
But, you know, I'm, I'm, I think we may have told her already, but we will tell her again to talk to you before she does any building or anything, just to make sure if she has any, any plans to go into the historic district, you know what I mean? So, a new infield. But anyway, if, if you all have any concerns, please call me over either tomorrow or Monday next week and tell me or show up at the meeting. Like I said, 5:00 Tuesday, the eighth.
All right.
I have a question.
Is there anything else?
Jeff has.
Jeff has a question.
I have a question. Back to this Robmont bond. If this board decides not to call, is it the Board of Mayor and Alderman ultimately makes that decision?
I mean, it'll go, they'll have to accept it. Yes, sir. I mean, if, if you all choose to say, yes, we're going to let them renew the bond, they will have to give us a new bond to replace the one that we have. And then that bond will come to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to, to accept. You guys have to accept it.
I don't, just so y'all have the knowledge of it, I don't think that that was the reason. I don't think it was politics that kept Mr. Snead's motion from passing. I just don't think that the majority thought that that was the appropriate lot and especially at the cost. I think it's around a million and a half, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Is that for all five lots? Is that for the whole thing, the whole subdivision?
I think so.
I hadn't heard any price. That's why I'm asking.
He's been talking with Mr. McKinney and it never got a second, so it never got on the floor.
I do recall that being the price because I had talked to this gentleman about the seller and what they were asking for a good while back.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought it was quite unreasonable at the time.
Well, I don't know, you know, just as my personal opinion, to build a fire hall, that's, that's an expensive piece of property. And if it's going to take at least two of those lots, then you're only looking at being able to turn three. And so, I think that was the reason that it would never went any further. To my knowledge, Batson Parkway has never even been discussed as far as putting one out there or by the Board of Mayor and Alderman anyway.
It does look like that would be a good location, but I agree, that's expensive land for the fire hall.
Yeah. As far as the location itself, I would not be opposed to it. My opposition is cost.
That makes sense.
So, that's just kind of to give y'all a heads up on.
Thanks for feeling us in.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Appreciate that. But I feel like, you know, if we've already renewed beyond what we're supposed to do, we have no other choice but to call it to. That's just my feelings, but.
I would go along with staff. You know, we have to play fair. We can't make Jim Moores and our local people, maybe they can get the two, but when they want to go further and further, we're giving somebody out of Clarksville 10, 11 times. I don't see that as being good.
I don't either. That makes sense, right?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you call the bond and the city completes work, at the time of the sale of the property, does the city recoup their money or how?
That bond is for the city to do the work.
Okay. So, the city gets paid through the bond?
Yes. That's why we, that's why we always have a bond for the different infrastructures and everything, lights and water and sewer and the roads and everything like that. In the event, you know, a lot of people have good intentions and everything like that to get everything done and then something might happen. And in the event it doesn't get done, then we have that avenue to fall back on and can get it done through that, through those monies.
Will that bond be updated to today's prices?
Yeah, I'm sure it will. It usually is. Usually, usually every time we renew a bond, you know, Allen will look at the price of, of pave, of the paving, the asphalt and everything like that. Probably the electric won't change unless, unless some of the lighting fixtures go up a little bit. As far as the sewer and everything, which is not, not anything there that's already in, I'm sure those things go up as well. The culverts, the, the pipe, whatever, they have to put in there. And that, and that's why we always ask these departments to give us an updated amount to go for the new bond. And then, and then sometimes, I think most of the time, we even add some, if they don't do anything, you know, we always have a 20% inflation. So, if, if they don't feel like they need anything more than what they already have, then we still have that 20% to cover the inflation.
It would be interesting to see what it was in 2011 and what it would be right now.
I'll probably tell you. October 6, 2011, the subdivision and bond of $95,760 was approved by the planning commission on February 3, 2011.
So, it hasn't gone up much at all? It's 105, or 95?
So.
In eight years?
But that's, let's see.
It sounds like the reason to not sell it means you got it priced too high.
I have no idea. I mean, and I, you know, I'm not the, I'm not the seller or I'm not the owner or anything. So, I don't even, you know, I just don't know.
And did I understand that you said there's a 20% inflation added each time it's renewed?
Yeah, that's what, I mean, sometime back in the, back in, well, I mean, I think we added on there. I don't, I'm not sure when we started doing that. There's, there's a time that we started doing that.
That doesn't add up.
Right. And, and.
You know, it's $19,000 just one time.
Right. At one time, they started doing that, I'm not sure when they started doing it, but we did start doing it. But on the last one, the inflation and administrative cost was $15,960.
Yeah. That's not 20%.
So, I don't, might have been 10%. But anyway, that's the latest bond that we have, so.
Good job, Gina.
It's been a, it's been, it's been a week, so.
All right. Do we have any other discussions?
I do not, unless y'all do. Any thoughts on the BZA? Or y'all can call me. Just call me if you do, please.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'm going to hit the gavel.